Okay, good evening and welcome to the May 18, 2015 meeting of BUHS S number six Board where we're starting a couple of minutes late today, 7:04. TCC finishing their meeting. Okay, first item, approval of the minutes for the clerk's report, approval of the minutes of our May 4 meeting. Now, these were just distributed this afternoon.
I got them this morning.
Or today.
Sometime today.
Plenty of time, right? If you're on the machine all the time on the internet. So I hope everybody had a chance to at least look through them. Ruth and I had previewed them and so is there a motion in regards to those minutes?
I move the minutes of May 4, 2015 as distributed.
Thank you. Second, Sean. Okay, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes of the May 4 meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions?
Abstentions.
Abstentions, Lori. No opposed? Okay. Those minutes are approved. Communications, are there any communications? Is there anything else for the clerk's report? If not, we will move briskly on to recognition of groups and individual visitors, of which there appear to be none, so we will move briskly on again to consent agenda. Is there a motion accordingly? I move we enter consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Lori. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? Seeing none, we are in consent agenda and we start with finance.
Finance committee met on Thursday, May 7 at 8:00 a.m. And we did not approve warrants at that meeting, but we have some warrants that were approved at a previous meeting. These are warrants dated April 6th. Warrant numbers 1172, 1173, 1174, 1175, 1177, 1178, 1179, 1180, and 1181, and 1182 in the amount of $509,275.72.
I believe there's a...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. That was warrant number 1182. The total is $562,831.99. And then we have warrants dated April 20th, 1183, 1184, 1185, 1187, 1188, 1189, 1190, and 1191 in the amount of $1,255,744.58. And on May 7th, we approved payrolls, amount of $440,987.17, and payroll of $417.50, But apparently we have not, Board has not heard the ones from March either. And a payroll of March 6th of $427,137.67, and March 20th of $444,131.3. So I think that brings us up to date on warrants and payrolls. And then we talked about the Eames Fund Award allocations. We reviewed the investment policy and approved $6,000 each to all students selected for, applied 2015 awards.
How many students?
Is it nine?
The nine, this again is the Eames Award and it has typically been 3,000 for each student in up to three years, so there's always, there's three new ones coming on typically and three dropping off. This year, based on the review of the fund balance and what we thought we could do, we have, we will have three new recipients at 6,000 and then the six that are repeating will be up to $6,000, which is a nice boost.
6,000 each?
Yes.
Nice.
Sean's been right on this one.
As a former member of the Finance Committee, I know that personally.
With, you know, well, it's...
I think total distribution was like $54,000 a year.
Yeah. Yeah. And, but we're still in very good shape with the fund and we're following the rules. We spent a fair amount of time reviewing the actual rules, which I think for me was probably the first, I've seen them before, but first time I really thought about the rules and it's pretty well outlined as we go about it, but we're in good shape with that fund and are able to do this this year.
Good work, committee.
And then we also reviewed a question about compensation for 1 percent fund payments.
And I asked Andy when, we were just in TCC and he said that Frank Rucker had been in touch with him a lot.
Yes. And we will be meeting this coming Thursday morning, May 1st at 8:00 at the James Kane Conference Center on Green Street, if anyone would like to join us.
Okay. Thank you, Ruth. Come. Okay. How about the SESU Finance Committee?
We met last Wednesday to go over personnel review, but I don't think it was an executive session. I mean, we looked, we acknowledged the, near the end of the first year of Frank Rucker's tenure as business manager and sung his praises because we thought that he was doing an exceptional job. And then we did a review of Ron Staley's 360 review and will he be here in line or not? I don't know if he's...
Probably not.
Okay, because at some point, you know, he will meet with all the individual boards. And then the proposed contract extension, it's usually been a rolling contract, will come up at the SU meeting on, it's in a couple Thursdays, Thursday the 28th, it's a week from Thursday, an SU meeting at, plotting at 6:45. I'm going to be on the road then, so I can't make it, so if somebody should, I don't know who the other two are, Ruth. Okay. So are you our substitute?
I am the next.
So if you're able to do it...
Yeah, I have it on my calendar. I should be able to...
That would be great. And then I don't, I don't see when the next SU Finance Committee meeting is scheduled. So that's what we did.
Okay.
And Ron's reviews were very good, by the way. That's what's in.
Okay. Planning and policy.
Planning and policy met this evening to discuss press code. Still going back and forth with the wording on that one section. We have a new proposal, I'll be emailing out to the administrators to get more feedback.
So that will probably, by the time we go through three readings, it'll be tight only because we generally only have one meeting a month in the summer. We'll try to see, make sure we can get that all accomplished in between so that when we open up for the new school year, it'd be great to have that in place.
I mean difficult.
You're being difficult.
Well, I wasn't going to point your fingers. I'm sawing up a little bit.
We're pointing our toes at him.
Well, I know it's a dicey subject, but it's needed and it'd be really great, from my perspective at least, to see something ready to go for the new school year. The first day of school, I think, is one of the most challenging days as it relates to that, if I'm not mistaken.
Or any day in the last month.
Temperature got up to about 80.
One day in the 50s, it wasn't so bad.
It wasn't so bad, right. Well, temperature dependent. Okay. Thank you, Ian. Teacher Killow, I know they met.
Yeah, we met earlier this evening. Thank you for letting us run over a little bit. And we reviewed 1 percent funds and we approved some of those and we are getting some more information on a couple of those and we're moving forward with those for the high school. Lot of curriculum development related to some of the education that we have already received related to some related personal learning plans and transferable skills and things like that that as teachers are looking at curriculum, they're looking at those pieces too of the things that are coming down, so they're doing a nice job at integrating that and kind of getting us ahead of the game a little bit, which is nice. We moved forward with a bunch of those today.
Okay. Thank you, Ricky. BAMS Committee.
BAMS Committee met this morning at 7:45. There we got some, a review of where we stand with personnel and some positions and I believe Mr. Lyman will be coming forward with a few of those later on during his report. We also got an update related to the Tarrant Initiative, which is something that is really going to help with technology and education integration and a lot of professional development for the staff over the next few years. And we got, I think, a pretty good little tune-up on personal learning plans this morning too. There was a lot of questions that we had as a committee and what that would look like, so we got a lot of information related to that too, so that was really kind of nice.
Thank you, Ricky. WRCC has not met, however, we have been given information on the ongoing Perkins Grant process and I will be asked to sign off on that on behalf of the Regional Advisory Board. And the Regional Advisory Board met last week, you'll probably be reporting on that. We had some great presentations from students on their various programs. Okay. Any other, anybody other met or the others haven't met? Okay, I guess that's it for consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I approve consent agenda.
Second. Second by Ricky. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Seeing none, it's unanimous and we move on to administrative reports. And let's go back the other way this time, north to south. Mr. Burnett? Last time we started with there.
So we... Talk slow. We have our sending school numbers in and they'll vary a little bit, we're still waiting on a couple of sending schools, but for this year, we have Twin Valley at nine students, Leland and Gray at 16, Hensdale we have five, we're still waiting on a few from those individuals, Bellows Falls, we have seven coming in for next year, which is the highest we've had in a long time from Bellows Falls, which we're very excited. So as of right now, a total of 37 sending school students, which we hope too that'll grow for next year as well.
Is there kind of a semi-target at around the 50 level?
Like 60 or 70.
Well, I know what we'd like.
50 would be probably a logical target.
Yeah.
This past Friday, Dave Houghton, our electronics teacher, brought some of his students to the Boston Museum of Science and this is quoting Mr. Houghton, "The exhibits were very good and some were closer updating. I think my group of students touched every button, dial and lever in the museum on all the interactive displays." Sorry.
Music with a report?
Yes.
Impressive.
Suntright. "The planetarium show really got the students' attention. It was a trip to the center of our galaxy with a number of stops along the way. A lot of students had never been to a planetarium before and they were awestruck. Of course, the overwhelming favorite once again was the lightning show. Eight-foot-long sparks accompanied by a loud bang is thrilling. The highlight of the day was the modulated Tesla coils are now playing songs with electric parks. My students thought that was the best." Also, last Friday, I had a student motivational speaker come to the Career Center for Blocks 1 and 2. His name was Craig Boykin. Craig Boykin was from Alabama and he shared his triumphant story of perseverance and overcoming many obstacles in his life. Craig dropped out of high school in the 10th grade and now holds a bachelor's degree, two master's degrees, and a PhD, and has also written four published books, so you couldn't hear a mouse in a auditorium talk. So very moving story this guy shared. Recently, we had a Project Lead the Way site visit, which is our engineering and biomedical curriculum we use to stay up to date with our industry partners. And the purpose of this site visit was to maintain our certification to offer dual enrollment credits to students enrolling in our STEM programs and that went very well. So we're excited about our teachers helping holding the Project Lead the Way curriculum. And news out of forestry, two forestry student, forestry and natural resources students, Lucas Wallace and Justin Linewett, participated in Tech School GOL State Competition on the 13th of May. The four events were Booring Station, Big Stump Event, Precision Stump Event, and Speed Cup. The focus of each event was safety, technique, and precision. Both participants did an outstanding job in the events and more importantly, representing our center. We had five students, Tyler Germain, Brandy Butler, Becca Freeman, Greg Wood, and Trevor Huell, participate in the Treasury Cup on May 8 in Montpelier. The purpose of the Treasury Cup is to promote student interest in the knowledge of personal finance, economics, and consumer affairs topics. This is the first year for Ms. Cornell and her students to participate in this event." Quoting Ms. Cornell, "It was an absolutely wonderful day. My students had a blast and can't wait to attend next year," said the business teacher. And I have handouts of reflections from the students pertaining to that event before we go off to view and some nice pictures. They had a really good time being, first time ever at the Treasury Cup. It's good exposure for the kids as well. On Friday, May 8, and Saturday, May 9, two automotive technology students, Chris Stone and a senior from Leland and Gray, and Tristan Hodge, senior from Grand Royal Union High School, attended 2015 Ford AAA Hands-On Competition at New England Dragway in Epping, New Hampshire. Each automotive student in the country takes an online written test. The top 10 schools from each state are chosen to attend the hands-on competition with two top students from each qualified school to represent that school. The state of Vermont has 17 automotive programs and WRCC has qualified for the hands-on competition for the past three years. Chris and Tristan finished in seventh place. They received scholarships from UNOH, Ohio Tech, and UTI. Along with these scholarships, they received a gear wrench set, a socket set, a flashlight, a jacket, t-shirt, a couple of hats, a backpack, and a duffel bag, and most of all, they received a good time, a great experience, and memories that will last a lifetime. Jim Valiere, their instructor, states that "I'm very proud of Chris and Tristan. They represented our Career Center with complete professionalism, pride, and respect." Other instructors commented to me how polite and courteous they are. Chris was accepted to VTC to take automotive and Tristan will be attending UTI for automotive. They will do great things in life and be very successful. One last thing, the FBLA Future Business Leader of America will be attending the Summer Conference, which will be held from June 26 to July 3, so right after school is out. And they are holding a series of fundraisers throughout the next month and a half and I also have handouts for that and there are tickets for 99 Restaurant that will donate to FBLA. If you could hand some of those out to your friends and colleagues, that'd be great. And we wish them well in Chicago. Our last RAB meeting of the year was held last Tuesday and we had four program presentations and the students did an outstanding job representing their programs. And those programs were our Ambassador Program, our Tech English, our Tech Math, and Forestry and Natural Resources Program. So until next year, want to thank the RAB and the Board for a great year and Woody, of course, for being our chair.
Heavy lifting. Those are extras. Any questions? Thank you. Michael. Thanks. Mr. Perrin.
Thank you. So starting off with our Science Department, Mike Arbaugh, this past weekend traveled to Randolph, Vermont for the award ceremony for the Freedom and Unity Television Youth Film Competition. Three of his students, Linea Congleton, Nick Grubinger, and Louisa Straffman were named finalists out of over 100 submissions. They're recognized for the work they did and I think I've talked to the Board about it, working on UHS Project Atlantic where they worked with town officials and it's part of that they work with town officials to raise awareness about energy usage and energy efficiency in town. And, you know, they made a great documentary about that project and so impressed that the organizers of that conference are asking that they host a conference in two years to host youth in Vermont to talk about how do youth in Vermont address environmental issues. So very proud of Mike and the work he's done. This is part of his Collegia High School course, Environmental Planning and Policy, and he's done an amazing job taking that course to the next level with that project. I have the latest issue of the, and the final issue of the year of the BUHS newsletter full of great events and things to check out. Ian, you had asked last meeting for a copy of the end of year events.
Yes.
It's right on the first page. So it's all right there. So, and, you know, we certainly hope that members of the Board can join us for those events. Of course, graduation on Friday, the 19th is the big one, but it'd be great that Board members attend senior awards night and night before and certainly feel welcome to come to everything, even finally exams if you'd like.
You don't have to take another test, do we?
You may have to. On the 28th, the class of 2015 is giving the rest of the school community a pretty unique gift. They have planned and organized a field day adventure for the rest of the school and Senior Class Council has really worked hard with all of the groups at the high school and the Career Center to really create something that is special for all of our students. There'll be a Battle of the Bands, we'll do a pre, a pre-field day assembly where we'll do the yearbook presentation, that dedication, but we're really looking forward to a great day on that day, so stay tuned for that. Earlier today, I met with a group of parents and representatives from the Bush Club and coaches to begin a process to review our Code of Conduct and our athletic expectations and that was an interesting conversation. We actually looked at nine schools from Vermont. We looked at their policy regarding extracurricular expectations as well as academic expectations and our next step is to involve some students and then third phase, I'll certainly ask the Board for input, but it was a good conversation and, you know, we continue that conversation as we look at a policy that's been around since, I think, 2006 is when that current policy was written, so. On the 22nd through the 26th, we'll be having 10 teachers engaged in a summer institute for proficiency-based learning. We'll be spending five days kind of trying to figure out the nuances of proficiency and begin to write some policy as it applies to BUHS next year and the year after, you know, moving ahead. I want to thank Lyle Holiday for getting us funding for that and, you know, she's done a great job of supporting us as we begin that process. Finally, a couple of personnel, quick personnel items. As you may remember the last meeting, Natasha Jones tendered her resignation. We have a candidate to fill that. This really, I don't know that I need board approval, this is really a transfer from another part of BUH number six to the high school. Catherine or Katie Westby has been a special educator for two years at BUHS and she has applied for and is the choice of the committee to take that position for next year.
What's the position again?
It's math. Natasha Jones.
Okay, yeah.
She's a dedicated math teacher.
Regular math teacher.
Yes. And so we'd like Katie Westby to fill that position. She was part of the interview process for the other two positions and we had 18 total applicants. The committee consisted of Mr. Day, Carolyn Durant, Rick Lane, Kevin O'Donnell, and Ms. Barton. So I don't know that we can approve of...
Well, I'm not sure either, but we could certainly confirm your decision.
Sure.
I move the hiring of Katie Westby for a math position.
Second. Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Seeing none, confirmed by the Board.
Thank you. The other hiring news we have is, you recall that Megan Shearer has resigned from the Social Studies Department. She's actually going out west to join her fiance. After, we had 51 people apply for the position. We interviewed eight teachers on the 11th and 13th. That was Chris Day, Deb Crock, Linda Navek, myself, and Ruth as well. And it was a pretty, it was a pretty arduous process. A lot of great candidates and it really came down to two candidates who taught sample lessons and at this point, I would like to recommend the appointment of Mr. Henry Zucchini as a social studies teacher. Henry actually did his student teaching here and since 2010, he and his family taught in Guadalajara, Mexico as a social studies teacher and in London as a humanities teacher. Henry brings a pretty wide array of experiences. He's taught AP, he's taught international baccalaureate programs, he's also taught more traditional local courses, so we think he's going to be a great addition to the department to kind of give us some flexibility in scheduling. Next year, that position will be social, ninth grade social studies and diversity. So I would ask the Board to appoint Mr. Zucchini.
I move the appointment of Mr. Henry Zucchini in social studies.
Moved by Ruth and second. Russ. You're giving them all away, huh? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Seeing none, it's unanimous.
That may be the last one for the year.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Well, it's always a few at this time of year.
Thank you.
I'll be around all summer.
That was quick.
Okay, we move on to BAMS. Mr. Lyman.
Yeah, a couple of student events, I'll update you on and then whether things happening. Class trips are happening, so we have two classes going out this Friday on trips, one to Boston and one to Northern Lights up in Essex. That's like rock climbing and a pretty exciting trip. And then next week, there's a group going to Boston. I get to ride on a yellow school bus to Boston and back. Can't wait. With the kids, though. The twenty-ninth, we have our dress-up dance, which is always a big event in middle school. This weekend, I don't know if anybody, I didn't make it to the Girls on the Run, but we had a lot of our students and staff participate. Baseball, softball, track and field teams all, I think, helped out and participated. Multiple staff members from BAMS who participated volunteered. So it was great. The Teachers Association and the school district hosted a retirement dinner the other night at the Legion, which was really nice. They give out five, ten, fifteen, all the way through, and then a couple of special awards and retirement recognition. So several BAMS teachers, staff members are recognized along with people from other schools. And it was a nice evening out with people. We are finishing, tomorrow is the last day for Science kneecap. I wish kneecap, the acronym would go away, but it's not. But science finishes up tomorrow. And Sback is pretty much done. The Sback's the computerized version. And generally, it went very smoothly for us. Ms. Curry has been amazing at setting all of that up. I realize that watching her today with the kneecaps, the old, you know, all these boxes and bins and labels and stuff. If you've ever been part of that or seen it, it's just crazy trying to organize and get that all set up. The computers were stressful trying to make sure it all worked. But we're basically handing out tickets to kids with their name and an ID number on it. With the kneecap, it's crazy booklets. And so hopefully, they'll be consistent over time. My big, well, we have a couple of employee updates. I'm this close to having somebody accept a math teacher pending board approval, but I wasn't able to speak with him this afternoon. So I'll have to bring that to the next meeting. I do have two internal candidates who I'd like to transfer that I don't think, I don't think that the board would approve those. How did you do the last one?
You don't think that we would need to?
Right, sorry. I'm going to try, but sorry. I don't think that you would need to, but I guess you can handle it the way you just handled Steve's. I have Kirk Johnson, who is a, the difference with Kirk is he's a very part-time German teacher. And we would like to transfer him to be more of just about a full-time position, replacing Suzanne Grenoble, who moved up to the high school. Kirk is already an employee. He's fabulous. And we used an interview committee and interviewed him, but he was clearly our choice. And then also another committee interviewed him.
Only six languages?
Yeah, only six. So yeah, incredible flexibility. Russ was part of that interview. And then with the math, we had Deb Serafino, I'd like to recommend Deb, would also be an internal transfer. She was hired last year to replace, it was an academic support math position, math interventionist position. And we had an open team position in the math team, in one of the core teams. So Deb would like to step into that role. And then I'll have a vacancy with the academic support. So those are my two employee requests.
Okay. On the first one, what is the net in terms of full-time equivalence?
Well, right now, I haven't been able to speak with Mr. Rucker specifically. Right now, on paper, it's a ninety percent position to stay within the budget on paper. I'd like to make it a hundred percent, but for now, I'm going to ask for the ninety percent position.
Okay.
Because I had a ninety, I had a hundred percent, and Kirk was a point one-four. So it's a one point one-four between two people. And so we advertised a point two-five because we switched around the French, Spanish, and German, who was teaching what. So we need a little more FTE in the French. So we advertised as a point two-five, which meant I only had point nine with the other position. So for now, we're going to make it work. But if finances work, and there's probably a discussion with Franken or the Finance Committee, I'd like to find that extra point one-oh and add a responsibility for him to make it full-time. Does that make any sense?
Yes, I was just trying to get a general feel.
Yeah, I get you. I just.
Quick.
So right now, on paper, it's a point ninety. But I'm going to be looking at whether we can make it a hundred percent. I don't know whether that would need board approval or not.
Probably replacing a point nine.
Were there any questions on, well, let's take the first one.
So I would move that we approve the increase of Kirk Johnson to a point ninety FTE position in the Language Arts at BAMS.
I'll second that.
Questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed or abstentions?
Thank you.
That's been blessed.
And then I would move that we approve the transfer of Deb Serafina from math, academic support math, to a regular math position on one of the teams.
Second? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, none? So that's a clear.
Thank you. So my last piece, which is big news for BAMS and the district, I believe, is I mentioned in the past that we've been trying to partner with the Tarrant Institute for Innovative Education. It's been about a three- or four-month process of discussing what it might look like with them, investigating, talking with the staff. And recently, we signed on the dotted line to a shared memorandum of understanding with the Tarrant Institute for a three-year commitment with them. And it's pretty big news for us. I've given a quick overview in the past. And maybe once things, maybe down the road, we'll do more of a, maybe I can do an informational session on really what it's going to look like. But you can certainly Google the Tarrant Institute. They partner with University of Vermont, so this is through UVM. The Deborah and Rich Tarrant Foundation donates a bunch of money to UVM to help fund this program. And they partner with Vermont schools to, initially, it's kind of transformed to getting actual hardware into schools. Now it's transformed into a lot of professional development, helping improve student learning, using the hardware and software that's in schools to enhance learning. We have three major goals with it. The first one, which is more of a short term, it's around one-to-one Chromebook digital citizenship, getting them into the, making them most effective within the school. So they have a curriculum that helps us roll out that includes really making them used consistently with students and staff and teachers. And then the second major goal is around the PLP, developing the PLPs into really student-centered portfolios that they're really engaged with. And the third major piece is helping us with this proficiency-based education piece and helping support that movement. So there's three major goals that we're partnering with them on. And teams will go up to the Middle Grades Institute this June to help develop action plans for next year in coordination with the Tarrant Institute. So pretty exciting for us. And certainly feel free to Google that, take a look. But maybe at some point, we could do a little more.
That would be a good board education topic sometime in the fall.
Yeah, yeah. I'm pretty excited about it. They're coming down for a formal introduction, orientation, with all of our staff on June eleventh. And it's some pretty substantial professional development that we're getting as part of this partnership that's free. So exciting.
Great.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Central office not here. Board chair. Basically, I would just remind everyone that our last meeting of the regular school year will be June first. And at that point, we will designate summer rules, so to speak, so that the committees can keep doing their work, even though we will be meeting less frequently as a full board. TCC will be given some decision-making discretion, as will Finance and the BAMS Committee. Okay, unfinished business. We have a policy review, F thirty.
Yep. I move we adopt policy F thirty, pupil privacy rights as written.
Second.
We've been through this one a couple of times.
Yep.
Been read and reread and reworked. Any last questions or comments? If not, all in favor of approving policy number F thirty, pupil privacy rights? Please signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed or abstentions? Seeing none? F thirty is adopted. Is there any other unfinished business? Is there any other new business? Okay. I bet you there's a. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have one quick question. Remember the position we created for Bill Jan? Is that still a viable position? Is that still?
Outreach coordinator.
Bill has let me know that he's going to stop doing it after this year. So we posted it. We're advertising for it now.
Could he speak to his success?
Sure.
I mean, or lack of it, or whatever? And maybe to look at it and see if it's a position we want to continue funding?
Yep, it's a good idea to see. We got some initial feedback shortly after he started.
Yeah, we haven't talked about it in a while.
Good point. Okay.
Anybody else? Not. Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Second? All in favor? Opposed or abstentions?
No regrets.
Okay, thank you all very much. And we'll see you on the first of June.